Senator Respecho, you are recognized.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I move that we now we say in the House rules, we revert back to motions.
On that motion, without any objections, so ordered.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, my first motion is to allow a six-term senator and former vice speaker of the legislature to be permitted on the session floor, and that's former vice speaker Ted Nelson, Honorable Ted Nelson.
On the motion, without any objections, so ordered.
My second motion, Madam Speaker, at your request as author of Bill 90-31, I move that that bill be taken out of the voting file and be referred back to committee.
On the motion, without any objections, so ordered.
I request that we now proceed to the second reading file. There's still one more item in that file.
So on the motion, to go back to second reading file, without any objections, so ordered.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, on the matter of Bill 35-31 sponsored by Senator Tom Ada, I think we're ready to have that bill go to the voting file after all the work that's been done both by his office, his committee, and our legal counsel to include the guidance by the comparator laws, I move that that bill be placed at the bottom of the voting file.
On the motion, without any objections, so ordered.
My next motion is to proceed to the voting file, Madam Speaker.
Thank you very much, Senator. So the first item on the third reading file is Resolution Number 12-31 COR. Please read the title.
Resolution Number 12-31 COR, introduced by B.C. Panglinen, relative to expressing the sense of Philistine expenditure priority of compact impact aid funds for fiscal year 2012 to Yimagala in Guam and to the Secretary of Interior to support capital improvement projects and operations of various impacted government agencies and departments.
Who votes and even do roll call?
Senator Tom Ada. Senator Tony Ada. Senator Blas. Vice Speaker Cruz. Senator Duñez. Senator Guthertz. Senator Mabini. Senator Munia Barnes. Senator Palacios. Senator Panglinen. Senator Respecho. Senator Rodriguez. Senator Silva Tyron. Speaker Wampat. Senator Yamashita.
Resolution Number 12-31 COR, received 14 ye votes and one excused absence. Resolution 1231 is duly passed by this body. Bill Number 8-31 LS.
Bill Number 8-31 LS, as substituted by the Committee on Youth Council Affairs Procurement General Government Operations and Public Broadcasting and amended on the floor, introduced by Judith P. Guthertz, DPA, an act to add a new subitem 13 to Section 3103 of Chapter 3 of Title 17 Guam Code Annotated, relative to authorizing the Superintendent of Education to higher maintenance, custodial, janitorial, and cafeteria personnel at the Department of Education.
Roll call. Senator Tom Ada. Senator Tony Ada. Senator Blas. Vice Speaker Cruz. Senator Duñez. Senator Guthertz. Senator Mabini. Senator Munia Barnes. Senator Palacios. Senator Panglinen. Senator Respecho. Senator Rodriguez. Senator Silva Tyron. Speaker Wampat. Senator Yamashita.
Substitute Bill Number 8-31 LS, received 14 ye votes and one excused absence. Substitute Bill Number 8-31 LS is duly passed by this body. Bill Number 12-31 COR.
Bill Number 12-31 COR, amended on the floor, introduced by Judith P. Guthertz, DPA, an act amended in Section 5601G, Part A of Article 11, Chapter 5 of Title 5 Guam Code Annotated, relative to the definition of immediate family and public procurement.
Roll call. Senator Tom Ada. Senator Tony Ada. Senator Blas. Vice Speaker Cruz. Senator Duñez. Senator Guthertz. Senator Mabini. Senator Munia Barnes. Senator Palacios. Senator Panglinen. Senator Respecho. Senator Rodriguez. Senator Silva Tyron. Speaker Wampat. Senator Yamashita. Senator Blas. Senator Duñez. Senator Mabini. Senator Munia Barnes. Speaker Wampat. Speaker Wampat?
Yes.
Senator Blas. Senator Duñez. Senator Mabini. Senator Munia Barnes.
Bill Number 12-31 COR, received eight ye votes, six nays, and one excused absence. Bill Number 12-31 COR is duly passed by this body. Bill Number 18-31.
Bill Number 18-31 COR, introduced by Thisiada Adolfo B. Palacios Senior, an act to repeal and reenact Section 67101.8 of Article 1, Chapter 67 of Title 21 Guam Code Annotated, relative to fulfilling the mandate of Public Law 30-199 by providing for the establishment of the Guam Building Code Council.
Roll call. Senator Tom Ada. Senator Tony Ada. Senator Blas. Vice Speaker Cruz. Senator Duñez. Senator Guthertz. Senator Mabini. Senator Munia Barnes. Senator Palacios. Senator Panglinen. Senator Respecho. Senator Rodriguez. Senator Silva Tyron. Speaker Wampat. Senator Yamashita.
Bill Number 18-31 COR, received 14 ye votes, one excused absence. Bill Number 18-31 COR is duly passed by this body. Bill Number 32-31.
Bill Number 32-31 COR, as substituted by the Committee on Education and Public Libraries and amended on the floor, introduced by Eileen A. Yamashita, Ph.D., Thisiada Samabini, Ph.D., M. Silva Tyron, M. C. M. Duñez, an act amended in Section 3102.1 of Article 1, Chapter 3 of Title 17 Guam Code Annotated, relative to the duties of the Guam Education Board.
Roll call. Senator Tom Ada. Senator Tony Ada. Senator Blas. Vice Speaker Cruz. Senator Duñez. Senator Guthertz. Senator Mabini. Senator Munia Barnes. Senator Palacios. Senator Panglinen. Senator Respecho. Senator Rodriguez. Senator Silva Tyron. Speaker Wampat. Senator Yamashita.
Substitute Bill Number 32-31 COR, received 13 ye votes, one nae, and one excused absence. Substitute Bill Number 32-31 COR is duly passed by this body. Bill Number 21. First bill, oh, yes. Congratulations. Bill Number 24-31 COR. 24-31.
Bill Number 24-31 COR, introduced by T. R. Munia Barnes, an act amended in Section 50103P4 of Article 1, Chapter 50 of Title 12 Guam Code Annotated, relative to Guam Economic Development Authority loans and lending practices.
Roll call. Senator Tom Ada. Senator Tony Ada. Senator. Senator Blas. Vice Speaker Cruz. Senator Duñez. Senator Guthertz. Senator Mabini. Senator Munia Barnes. Senator Palacios. Senator Panglinen. Senator Respecho. Senator Rodriguez. Senator Silva Tyron. Speaker Wampat.
No. No, I hear.
Senator Yamashita. Senator Tony Ada. Senator Mabini. Senator Mabini.
Bill Number 24-31 COR, received seven ye votes, seven nae votes, and one excused absence. Bill Number 24-31 COR failed to get the required votes to be passed by this body. Resolution Number 40-31 COR.
Resolution Number 40-31 COR, introduced by T. R. Munia Barnes, B.J. F. Cruz, relative to requesting that Congresswoman Madeline Z. Bordalha introduce legislation in the United States House of Representatives to amend the Travel Promotion Act of 2009, ensuring Guam's access to millions of tourism-related dollars from the federal government.
Roll call. Senator Tom Ada. Senator Tony Ada. Senator Blas. Vice Speaker Cruz. Senator Duñez. Senator Guthertz. Senator Mabini. Senator Munia Barnes. Senator Palacios. Senator Panglinen. Senator Respecho. Senator Rodriguez. Senator Silva Tyron. Speaker Wampat. Senator Yamashita.
Resolution Number 40-31 COR, received 14 ye votes and one excused absence. Resolution Number 40-31 COR is duly passed by this body. Bill Number 42-31 COR.
Bill Number 42-31 COR, introduced by J.T. Wampat E. D. D., R. J. Respecho, B. J. F. Cruz, an act to repeal Section 3123 of Article 1, Chapter 3 of Title 17 Guam Code Annotated, relative to the Superintendent and Deputy Superintendent not part of Yimagala in Guam's Governor's Cabinet.
Roll call. Senator Tom Ada. Senator Tony Ada. Senator Blas. Vice Speaker Cruz. Senator Duñez. Senator Guthertz. Senator Mabini. Senator Munia Barnes. Senator Palacios. Senator Panglinen. Senator Respecho. Senator Rodriguez. Senator Silva Tyron. Speaker Wampat. Senator Yamashita.
Bill Number 42-31 COR, received 14 ye votes and one excused absence. Bill Number 42-31 COR is duly passed by this body. Bill Number 45-31 COR.
Bill Number 45-31 COR, substituted and amended on the floor, introduced by Adolfo B. Palacios Senior, an act amended in Section 2 of Public Law 26-100, relative to authorizing the Guam Police Department to occupy office space in Tejon until permanent headquarters and administrative office facility is constructed.
Roll call. Senator Tom Ada. Senator Tony Ada. Senator Blas. Vice Speaker Cruz. Senator Duñez. Senator Guthertz. Senator Mabini. Senator Munia Barnes. Senator Palacios. Senator Panglinen. Senator Respecho. Senator Rodriguez. Senator Silva Tyron. Speaker Wampat. Senator Yamashita.
Substitute Bill Number 4. Yes, Senator.
Before the votes announced, Senator Tom Ada brought to my attention and bring to the body that the title, if the council can just have the title be clear, because it says "an administrative office facility until it's constructed," but in the body of the bill, there is a deadline for them to relocate. So it should read "in Tejon until a permanent headquarters and administrative office facility is constructed or no later than September 30, 2013."
Or no later than... September 30, 2014.
So the title reflects the content of the law. Thank you.
13, not 14, 13? 13. Duly noted, Senator. Substitute Bill Number 45-31 COR, received 14 ye votes and one excused absence. Substitute Bill Number 45-31 COR is duly passed by this body. Resolution Number 51-31.
Resolution Number 51-31 COR, as amended on the floor, introduced by Chris M. Duñez, Thisiada F. F. Blas Jr., and others, relative to providing measures to address the possibility of radiation exposure resulting from Japan's nuclear reactor incidents.
Roll call. Senator Tom Ada. Senator Tony Ada. Senator Blas. Vice Speaker Cruz. Senator Duñez. Senator Guthertz. Senator Mabini. Senator Munia Barnes. Senator Palacios. Senator Panglinen. Senator Respecho. Senator Rodriguez. Senator Silva Tyron. Speaker Wampat. Senator Yamashita.
Resolution Number 51-31 COR, received 14 ye votes and one excused absence. Resolution Number 51-31 COR is duly passed by this body. Bill Number 53-31 COR.
Bill Number 53-31 COR, as amended by the Committee on Public Safety, Law Enforcement, and Judiciary, and further amended on the floor, introduced by Adolfo B. Palacios Senior, an act amended in Section 11.10 of Chapter 11, Title 8, Guam Code Annotated, relative to authorizing the expungement of crime records following an executive pardon of a crime.
Roll call. Senator Tom Ada. Senator Tony Ada. Senator Blas. Vice Speaker Cruz. Senator Duñez. Senator Guthertz. Senator Mabini. Senator Munia Barnes. Senator Palacios. Senator Panglinen. Senator Respecho. Senator Rodriguez. Senator Silva Tyron. Speaker Wampat. Speaker Wampat. Senator Yamashita.
Bill Number 53-31 COR, received 13 ye votes, one nae, and one excused absence. Bill Number 53-31 COR is duly passed by this body. Oh, sorry, I'll bring it closer then. It was passed. So is the hearing, okay. Me too, I couldn't hear myself. Bill Number 56-31.
Bill Number 56-31 COR, as substituted by the Committee on Appropriations, Taxation, Public Debt, Banking, Insurance, Retirement, and Land, and amended on the floor, introduced by Dennis G. Rodriguez Jr., Judith P. Guthertz, DPA, Eileen A. Yamashita, Ph.D., and others, an act amended in Section 4302C of Article 3, Chapter 4, Title 4, Guam Code Annotated, relative to policymakers participating in the government of Guam healthcare insurance negotiating team.
Roll call. Senator Tom Ada. Senator Tony Ada. Senator Blas. Vice Speaker Cruz. Senator Duñez. Senator Guthertz. Senator Mabini. Senator Munia Barnes. Senator Palacios. Senator Panglinen. Senator Respecho. Senator Rodriguez. Senator Silva Tyron. Speaker Wampat. Senator Yamashita. Senator Panglinen.
Substitute Bill Number 56-31 COR, received 13 ye votes, one nae, one excused absence. Substitute Bill Number 56-31 COR is duly passed by this body. Bill Number 57-31 COR.
Bill Number 57-31 COR, as substituted by the Committee on Municipal Affairs, Tourism, Housing, and Recreation, and amended on the floor, introduced by T. R. Munia Barnes, Judith P. Wampat E. D. D., Samabini, Ph.D., an act amended in Sections 1013 and 1013.1C of Chapter 10 of Title 1, Guam Code Annotated, relative to authorizing the Mayor's Council of Guam to maintain oversight of the Guam Island Fair Committee and all Liberation Day festivities, and to add a new section 1013.1.1 to Chapter 10 of Title 1, Guam Code Annotated, relative to ensuring fiscal accountability for all funds earned during Liberation Day festivities.
Roll call. Senator Tom Ada. Senator Tony Ada. Senator Blas. Vice Speaker Cruz. Senator Duñez. Senator Guthertz. Senator Mabini. Senator Munia Barnes. Senator Palacios. Senator Panglinen. Senator Respecho. Senator Rodriguez. Senator Silva Tyron. Speaker Wampat. Senator Yamashita.
Substitute Bill Number 57-31 COR, received 13 ye votes, one nae, one excused absence. Substitute Bill Number 57-31 COR is duly passed by this body. Bill Number 59-31 COR.
Bill Number 59-31 COR, amended on the floor, introduced by B. Anthony Ada, an act amended in Section 20 of Chapter 13 of Public Law 30-196, the General Appropriations Act of 2011, relative to requiring all government of Guam agencies to comply with the staffing pattern disclosure mandates inclusive of the fourth quarter of fiscal year 2010.
Roll call. Senator Tom Ada. Senator Tony Ada. Senator Blas. Vice Speaker Cruz. Senator Duñez. Senator Guthertz. Senator Mabini. Senator Munia Barnes. Senator Palacios. Senator Panglinen. Senator Respecho. Senator Rodriguez. Senator Silva Tyron. Speaker Wampat. Senator Yamashita.
Bill Number 59-31 COR, received 14 ye votes and one excused absence. Bill Number 59-31 COR is duly passed by this body. Bill Number 61-31 COR.
Bill Number 61-31 COR, as substituted by the Committee on Public Safety, Law Enforcement, and Judiciary, and amended on the floor, introduced by Thisiada Adolfo B. Palacios Senior, an act to add Section 1102C1, Section 1102VV, Section 1102... An act to add section eleven zero-two C one, section eleven zero-two V V, section eleven zero-two W W, to add new definitions to section five-one-zero-one, to amend section five-one-zero-nine A, section five-one-zero-nine C, section five-one-one-twelve B, and to add section five-one-one-two D, section five-one-one-six D, section five-one-one-seven of title sixteen Guam Code annotated, relative to granting DMV, MCSAP officials with authority to issue citations and expand the scope of their authority to interestate movements of CMVS and codifies EO eighty-seven dash twenty-seven, relative to conducting inspection of CMVs at owners' premises.
Roll call. Senator Tom Ada? Senator Tony Ada?
Yes.
Senator Blas? Vice Speaker Cruz? Senator Duñez? Senator Guthertz?
Yes.
Senator Mabini?
Yes.
Senator Munia Barnes? Senator Palacios?
Yes.
Senator Pangolinan?
Yes.
Senator Rispicio?
Yes.
Senator Rodriguez?
Yes.
Senator Silva Tyron?
Oui.
Speaker Wampat?
Oui.
Senator Yamashita? Substitute bill number sixty-one dash thirty-one COR received fourteen yea votes, one excused absence. Substitute bill number sixty-one dash thirty-one COR is duly passed by this body. Bill number sixty-three dash thirty-one.
Bill number sixty-three dash thirty-one COR as amended by the Committee on Public Safety, Law Enforcement, and Judiciary, introduced by Adolphie Palacios Sr. An act to add a new section seventy-five one zero seven to chapter seventy-five title ten Guam Code annotated, relative excluding law enforcement personnel, employees, and physicians from the application of the provision of safe harbor under the government of Guam's drug-free workplace program, and to amend section seventy-five one hundred eight, chapter seventy-five title ten Guam Code annotated, relative to the definition of law enforcement, personnel, employee, or physician.
Roll call. Senator Tom Ada?
Yes.
Senator Tony Ada?
Yes.
Senator Blas?
Yes.
Vice Speaker Cruz? Senator Duñez?
Oui.
Senator Guthertz?
Yes.
Senator Mabini?
Yes.
Senator Munia Barnes?
Yes.
Senator Palacios?
Yes.
Senator Pangolinan? Senator Rispicio?
Yes.
Senator Rodriguez?
Yes.
Senator Silva Tyron?
Oui.
Speaker Wampat?
Oui.
Senator Yamashita?
Yes.
Senator Munia Barnes? Bill number sixty-three dash thirty-one COR received eight yea votes, six nays, and one excused absence. Bill number sixty-three dash thirty-one COR is duly passed by this body. Bill number sixty-four dash thirty-one.
Bill number sixty-four dash thirty-one COR substituted by the Committee on Youth, Culture Affairs, Governmental Operations, Procurement, and Public Broadcasting, and the other, and amended on the floor, introduced by Aileen E. Yamashita, Ph.D., T.C. Ada. An act to add a new section seven-one-one-two point one to division two, chapter seven of title seventeen Guam Code annotated, relative to authorizing the Guam Department of Education, GDOE, to enter into a public-private partnership for the management of the maintenance, operation, and repair of GDOE facilities.
Roll call. Senator Tom Ada?
Yes.
Senator Tony Ada?
Yes.
Senator Blas?
Yes.
Vice Speaker Cruz? Senator Duñez?
Oui.
Senator Guthertz?
Yes.
Senator Mabini?
Yes.
Senator Munia Barnes?
Yes.
Senator Palacios?
Yes.
Senator Pangolinan?
Aye.
Senator Rispicio?
Yes.
Senator Rodriguez?
Yes.
Senator Silva Tyron?
Oui.
Speaker Wampat?
Oui.
Senator Yamashita? Substitute bill number sixty-four dash thirty-one COR received twelve yea votes, two nays, and one excused absence. Substitute bill number sixty-four dash thirty-one COR is duly passed by this body. Bill number sixty-seven dash thirty-one COR.
Bill number sixty-seven dash thirty-one COR as substituted by the Committee on Public Safety, Law Enforcement, and Judiciary and amended on the floor, introduced by B. Anthony Ada, Adolphie Palacios Sr. An act to add a new section thirty-three forty-seven to Article III, Chapter three of title sixteen Guam Code annotated, relative to penalties for moving violations including large vehicles.
Roll call. Senator Tom Ada? Senator Tony Ada? Senator Blas? Vice Speaker Cruz? Senator Duñez?
Oui.
Senator Guthertz?
Yes.
Senator Mabini?
Yes.
Senator Munia Barnes?
Oui.
Senator Palacios?
Yes.
Senator Pangolinan?
Yes.
Senator Rispicio? Senator Rodriguez?
Yes.
Senator Silva Tyron? Speaker Wampat? Senator Yamashita? Senator Tom Ada? Senator Silva Tyron?
Yes.
Speaker Wampat?
Substitute bill number sixty-seven dash thirty-one COR received fourteen yea votes, one excused absence. Substitute bill number sixty-seven dash thirty-one COR is duly passed by this body. Bill number seventy-four dash thirty-one.
Bill number seventy-four dash thirty-one COR as amended on the floor, introduced by Judithie Wampat E.D.D., an act amend section forty-three one zero seven of Article one, chapter forty-three, of title five Guam Code annotated, relative to the quarterly attendance report of board and commission members.
Roll call. Senator Tom Ada? Senator Tony Ada?
Yes.
Senator Blas?
Yes.
Vice Speaker Cruz? Senator Duñez?
Oui.
Senator Guthertz?
Yes.
Senator Mabini?
Yes.
Senator Munia Barnes?
Yes.
Senator Palacios?
Yes.
Senator Pangolinan? Senator Rispicio?
Yes.
Senator Rodriguez?
Yes.
Senator Silva Tyron?
Yes.
Speaker Wampat?
Oui.
Senator Yamashita? Bill number seventy-four dash thirty-one COR received fourteen yea votes and one excused absence. Bill number seventy-four dash thirty-one COR is duly passed by this body. Bill number seventy-five dash thirty-one.
Bill number seventy-five dash thirty-one COR amended on the floor, introduced by Adolphie Palacios Sr., Judithie Wampat E.D.D., T.C. Pangolinan. An act to add new section seventy-eight one zero three point one, seventy-eight one zero three A five, and seventy-eight one zero three D one, to chapter seventy-eight of title ten Guam Code annotated, relative to providing the Guam Community Police Review Commission with administrative and clerical support necessary for the conduct of its activities and allowing for the appointment of an interim chairperson.
Roll call. Senator Tom Ada?
Yes.
Senator Tony Ada?
Yes.
Senator Blas?
Yes.
Vice Speaker Cruz? Senator Duñez?
Yes.
Senator Guthertz?
Yes.
Senator Mabini?
Yes.
Senator Munia Barnes? Senator Palacios?
Yes.
Senator Pangolinan?
Yes.
Senator Rispicio?
Yes.
Senator Rodriguez?
Yes.
Senator Silva Tyron?
Yes.
Speaker Wampat?
Oui.
Senator Yamashita? Bill number seventy-five dash thirty-one COR received fourteen yea votes and one excused absence. Bill number seventy-five dash thirty-one COR is duly passed by this body. Bill number seventy-three dash thirty-one.
Bill number seventy-three dash thirty-one COR as amended on the floor, introduced by T.C. Pangolinan, R.J. Rispicio. An act appropriate funds to the Guam Environmental Protection Agency for actions arising from the enforcement activities of chapter seventy-six of title ten Guam Code annotated.
Senator Tom Ada?
Yes.
Senator Tony Ada?
Yes.
Senator Blas?
Yes.
Vice Speaker Cruz? Senator Duñez?
Oui.
Senator Guthertz?
Yes.
Senator Mabini?
Yes.
Senator Munia Barnes? Senator Palacios?
Yes.
Senator Pangolinan?
Yes.
Senator Rispicio?
Yes.
Senator Rodriguez?
Yes.
Senator Silva Tyron?
Yes.
Speaker Wampat?
Oui.
Senator Yamashita? Bill number seventy-three dash thirty-one COR received fourteen yea votes and one excused absence. Bill number seventy-three dash thirty-one COR is duly passed by this body. Bill number seventy-six dash thirty-one. Okay, senators, we're voting. Bill number seventy-six dash thirty-one COR.
Bill number seventy-six dash thirty-one COR introduced by B. Anthony Agun. An act amend...
By who?
I mean, Ada, B. Anthony Ada.
Okay.
An act amend section thirty-three one eleven of chapter thirty-three of title seven Guam Code annotated, relative to mechanic claims.
Roll call. Senator Tom Ada?
Yes.
Senator Tony Ada?
Yes.
Senator Blas?
Yes.
Vice Speaker Cruz? Senator Duñez?
Oui.
Senator Guthertz?
Yes.
Senator Mabini?
Yes.
Senator Munia Barnes? Senator Palacios?
Yes.
Senator Pangolinan?
Yes.
Senator Rispicio?
Yes.
Senator Rodriguez?
Yes.
Senator Silva Tyron?
Yes.
Speaker Wampat?
Oui.
Senator Yamashita? Bill number seventy-six dash thirty-one COR received fourteen yea votes, one excused absence. Bill number seventy-six dash thirty-one COR is duly passed by this body. Bill number seventy-nine dash thirty-one.
Bill number seventy-nine dash thirty-one COR introduced by T.C. Ada, R.J. Rispicio, Judithie Guthertz D.P.A., B. Anthony Ada, T.R. Munia Barnes. An act to repeal and reenact Article III of chapter ten of title twelve Guam Code annotated, relative to prohibiting the privatization, sale, or lease of the O.C.A. de la empresa commercial port.
Roll call. Senator Tom Ada?
Yes.
Senator Tony Ada?
Yes.
Senator Blas?
Yes.
Vice Speaker Cruz? Senator Duñez?
Oui.
Senator Guthertz?
Yes.
Senator Mabini?
Yes.
Senator Munia Barnes? Senator Palacios?
Yes.
Senator Pangolinan? Senator Rispicio? Senator Rodriguez?
Yes.
Senator Silva Tyron?
Yes.
Speaker Wampat?
Oui.
Senator Yamashita? Bill number seventy-nine dash thirty-one COR received fourteen yea votes, one excused absence. Bill number seventy-nine dash thirty-one COR is duly passed by this body. Bill number eighty dash thirty-one.
Bill number eighty dash thirty-one COR as amended on the floor, introduced by T.C. Pangolinan, Judithie Wampat E.D.D. An act to add a new section five-eight-one-four-eight to chapter fifty-eight of title twelve Guam Code annotated, relative to establishing the Qualifying Certificate Review Board.
Roll call. Senator Tom Ada?
No.
Senator Tony Ada?
No.
Senator Blas?
Yes.
Vice Speaker Cruz? Senator Duñez?
No.
Senator Guthertz?
Yes.
Senator Mabini?
Yes.
Senator Munia Barnes? Senator Munia Barnes? Senator Palacios? Senator Pangolinan?
Yes.
Senator Rispicio. Senator Rodriguez. Senator Silva Tyron. Speaker Wampat. Senator Yamashita. Senator Silva Tyron. Senator Silva Tyron.
Bill number eighty dash thirty-one C O R received eight ye votes, six nay votes, and one excused absence. Bill number eighty dash thirty-one C O R is duly passed by this body. Substitute bill number, oh no, bill number eighty-three dash thirty-one L.S.
Bill number eighty-three dash thirty-one L.S. as amended on the floor, introduced by R.J. Rispicio, T.C. Ada, Dennis G. Rodriguez Junior, and others. An act to add a new section eight-zero-one-one-six F to chapter eighty of Title X Guam Code Annotated to provide expanded transparency and public access relative to the finances of the Guam Memorial Hospital Authority.
Roll call. Senator Tom Ada. Senator Tony Ada. Senator Blas. Vice Speaker Cruz. Senator Duñez. Senator Guthers. Senator Mabini. Senator Munia Barnes. Senator Palacios. Senator Pangolinan. Senator Rispicio. Senator Rodriguez. Senator Silva Tyron. Speaker Wampat. Senator Yamashita.
Bill number eighty-three dash thirty-one L.S. received fourteen ye votes, one excused absence. Bill number eighty-three dash thirty-one L.S. is duly passed by this body. Bill number ninety-eight dash thirty-one C O R.
Bill number ninety-eight dash thirty-one C O R, a substitute for the Committee on Education and Public Libraries, and amended on the floor, introduced by Judith T. Wampat, E D D., T.R. Munia Barnes, Chris M. Duñez, and others. An act to amend section one-five-one-three-one-one to add a new section one-five-one-three-one-one point one, and to repeal section one-five-one-three-zero-seven-C all of article thirteen of chapter fifteen of Title seventeen Guam Code Annotated relative to the awarding of the Dr. Antoni Uchi-Yamashita Teacher Course Scholarship to Tomorrow Language and Culture Students at the University of Guam.
Roll call. Senator Tom Ada. Senator Tony Ada. Senator Blas. Vice Speaker Cruz. Senator Duñez. Senator Guthers. Senator Mabini. Senator Munia Barnes. Senator Palacios. Senator Pangolinan. Senator Rispicio. Senator Rodriguez. Senator Silva Tyron. Speaker Wampat. Senator Yamashita.
Substitute bill number ninety-eight dash thirty-one C O R received fourteen ye votes, one excused absence. Substitute bill number ninety-eight dash thirty-one C O R is duly passed by this body. Bill number one-hundred dash thirty-one.
Bill number one-hundred dash thirty-one C O R as amended on the floor, introduced by V. Anthony Ada, R.J. Rispicio, Adolph V. Palacios Senior, Sam Mabini, Ph.D., T.R. Munia Barnes. An act to add a new section forty-one-twenty-five to chapter four of Title seventeen Guam Code Annotated relative to encompassing Internet safety and public education curricula.
Roll call. Senator Tom Ada. Senator Tony Ada. Senator Blas. Vice Speaker Cruz. Senator Duñez. Senator Guthers. Senator Mabini. Senator Munia Barnes. Senator Palacios. Senator Pangolinan. Senator Rispicio. Senator Rodriguez. Senator Silva Tyron. Speaker Wampat. Senator Yamashita.
Bill number one-hundred dash thirty-one C O R received fourteen ye votes, one excused absence. Bill number one-hundred dash thirty-one C O R is duly passed by this body. We're going to take a brief recess for bill thirty-five. Okay, so where Senator Barnes? Okay, can we have it in the next legislative day? It's back in session. We are back on the voting file, and we are on bill number thirty-five dash thirty-one C O R. Yes, Senator?
I'd just like to bring the attention of the body. In discussion of the bill, on the bill on page twelve and thirteen, the word incineration appeared under section U-U, which I made a motion to strike out, which is out, and it was also under V-V. I also made the motion to strike out incineration, but the word incineration is still here in V-V, and so the engross bill should reflect that that incineration should also be struck out on line one of page thirteen. That's correct. Line one.
Yes, line one, page thirteen. And.
Yeah, right.
No, so line one on page thirteen.
Incineration should also be struck out there. Should be struck out.
And on page twelve.
No, already they did that.
Oh, that's already done. Okay. All right, so that's the only one then? So, okay, senators, and legal counsel already has that information then, so that when, then they'll reengross. So that when, then they'll reengross that page. So Bill number thirty-five dash thirty-one C O R. Can the clerk please read the title?
Bill number thirty-five dash thirty-one C O R, substitute with the Committee on Youth, Cultural Affairs, Procurement, General Government Operations, and Public Broadcasting, and amended on the floor. Introduced by T C Ada, R J Rispisho, B J F Cruz. An Act on Man, Section twelve thousand of Chapter twelve of Title twelve, Guam Code Annotated. To man, Section nineteen twenty-one of Chapter nineteen of Title one, Guam Code Annotated. And to repeal Sections fifty-one, one zero three B, and fifty-one, one eighteen of Chapter fifty-one, and to repeal Article three, Article four, Article six, Article seven, Article eight, and Article nine of Chapter fifty-one of Title ten G C A, and reenact them under a new Chapter fifty-one A, Title ten G C A, relative to establishing the Guam Solid Waste Authority, an autonomous public corporation.
Pro count. Senator Tom Ada? Senator Tony Ada? Senator Blas? Vice Speaker Cruz? Senator Duñez? Senator Guthertz? Senator Mabini? Senator Munia Barnes? Senator Palacios? Senator Pangolinan? Senator Rispisho? Senator Rodriguez? Senator Silva Tyron? Speaker Wampat? Senator Yamashita? Speaker Wampat?
Pass.
Speaker Wampat?
Pass.
Substitute Bill number thirty-five dash thirty-one C O R, received thirteen yea votes, one nay, and one excused absence. Substitute Bill number thirty-five dash thirty-one C O R is duly passed by this body. Senator Rispisho, you're recognized.
Thank very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I move that we reconsider the actions of the body on the matter of the failed Bill twenty-four dash thirty-one.
And on what legislative day? This legislative day or the next?
Now, Madam Speaker.
On the motion then, without any objection, which is to re... Oh, okay, so there is an objection then for the reconsideration of the actions of this body on Bill number twenty-four dash thirty-one, for this legislative day. So there is objection, I'm going to call for the vote. Please raise your hand. For the reconsideration. Pat, you counted? Okay, the motion carries. So, on Bill number twenty-four dash thirty-one C O R.
Bill number twenty-four dash thirty-one C O R, introduced by T R Munia Barnes. An Act on Man, Section five zero one zero three P four of Article one, Chapter fifty of Title twelve, Guam Code Annotated, relative to Guam Economic Development Authority Loans and Lending Practices.
Pro count. Senator Tom Ada? Senator Tony Ada? Senator Blas? Vice Speaker Cruz? Senator Duñez? Senator Guthertz? Senator Mabini? Senator Munia Barnes? Senator Palacios? Senator Pangolinan? Senator Rispisho? Senator Rodriguez? Senator Silva Tyron? Speaker Wampat?
No.
Senator Yamashita? Bill number twenty-four dash thirty-one C O R, received eight yea votes, six nay votes, and one excused absence. Bill number twenty-four dash thirty-one C O R has been duly passed by this body. Okay, we've exhausted then all of the bills on the agenda. And we are always at the end, which is an opportunity for the members on the few remarks. I recognize Senator Pangolinan.
Sidozmasi, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I wanted to stand here and pay tribute to a gentleman that has worked tirelessly for our community in many different areas. But most recently, his efforts to bring the story of Guam's war survivors to the nation's capital. Sadly, we just received word or and learned of the passing of Mr. Tomas Barcenas, who, along with Senator Frank Blas and I, traveled to Washington last year to testify before the United States Congress Committee on, the full committee of the House on Natural Resources, on the hearing of the War Reparations Bill for the Manomkoos of Guam and the survivors of World War Two and their descendants. I cannot tell you how invaluable that appearance was by Mr. Barcenas and what a job he did in representing the Manomkoos and that generation, our greatest generation. Mr. Barcenas had this long history of contributing to our community. But in the last few years, him and many others that work with him have taken up the call to support and build support within our community for the efforts of our Washington delegates to bring final closure to the payment of war reparations for our greatest generation. Mr. Barcenas, a few years ago, put up a tent, along with his many colleagues or contemporaries, to gather petition signatures to support H R forty-four and previous legislation. And they gathered thousands of signatures, Madam Speaker, during the annual Liberation Day Parade. And it was really that action that they did that I learned from and inspired me to begin also doing the Chamorur Registry, Decolonization Registry, in my conversations with him. Even though he was very passionate, very grateful for the liberation that occurred for that greatest generation from the Japanese occupation and brutality after the war, Mr. Barcenas never let that interfere with his passion of seeing the people of Guam and that generation also have the opportunity to express themselves with regards to the political destiny of our community. And, Madam Speaker, him and many others who felt like him did it with such class and such diplomacy that, you know, we had converted people because of their approach and the way that they presented, especially Mr. Barcenas, presented that basic human right, that we can be loyal to America, that advocating for Chamorur self-determination did not lessen that loyalty that he had for America and the gratefulness that he had. But he also saw himself as a Chamorur and that, as a Chamorur man first than that. And so I wanted to just spend a few moments today to ask this body and our community at large to say a prayer in passing to this proud Chamorur, proud American, and a proud servant of the people of Guam. And I want to extend my sincere condolences and sympathies to his family as they bear the sorrow of his loss from now until the time that they let his body committed to the earth and his soul goes up into the heavens for the eternal rest with our Father. Sidozmasi, Madam Speaker.
Thank you very much, Senator Pangolinan. I recognize Senator Frank Blas, Jr.
Thank you, Madam Speaker, and thank you for the opportunity to speak as well. Madam Speaker, I join my good colleague from Baragada, Speaker Pangolinan, in giving honor and tribute to a man that has also helped to shape a number of issues and a number of concerns that I continue to fight for. We all continue to fight for. You know, Madam Speaker, the good Lord gave me the honor of being able to be with him, along with the good speaker in Washington, D.C., to speak before the House Committee. And one of the most jovial moments that I can recall, and I'm sure that the speaker can join me on this, is when, in the middle of the speech, he wanted for all of us to sing. And he wanted us, for all of us, to be able to sing a song that many of our survivors were singing at the time of their occupation to keep their hopes and their spirits and the perseverance going. He wanted to sing that in honor of the many survivors that have passed waiting and many of the survivors who continue to wait for that recognition, for the recognition of the loyalty they had. There was no doubt, Madam Speaker, that this man epitomized the loyalty that he had for his country, but at the same time, the love and the passion that he had for his people. I can recall about two weeks ago, I'm just trying to remember where, seeing him and knowing that even at that time, he already had, was agonizing or suffering with that illness that he had succumbed to this morning. He still saw the time and the need to be able to continue to push the efforts for the Manomkoos, for the people of his generation. I think for all of us, if we look back, we've learned a lot from this little old man who stood probably four foot nothing. But he has big shoes to fill. He's a man that spent a lot of his time and I say, I was made to understand as a principal, as an educator, the love and the passion that he had for his people to make sure that his people got the best that they could get and never to settle for anything less. He's a man that this island is going to miss very dearly. But a man that this island should never forget. And I thank you for the opportunity to be helped to honor this gentleman. Because this gentleman has lived all his life to make sure that his generation and the people of Guam are continuously honored for what, for the patriotism and the loyalty that they have. And that he's also a man that made sure that everybody, even of the people in the nation's capital, that it was incumbent of them to know who the people of Guam are. He was the epitome of We Are Guam. And that's somebody we should never forget. Thank you very much, Madam Speaker.
Thank you very much, Senator Blas. Is there anybody else? There being none, I think we're now on announcements. And the only announcement I have for all of us is that one of our very own, Maria Pangolinan, has been selected to now be the executive director of the Guam Election Commission. And Senator Rodriguez, can you share also about the five K announcement?
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Before I announce that, I'd just like to thank my colleagues. This is my, I think, our second legislative session and want to thank the veterans that are here in the session hall for giving us the guidance and really being a good mentor to us. I think I can speak for all the other freshmen here. Anyways, Madam Speaker, on April tenth, we are organizing a five K Race for Japan that the Guam Legislature through you will also be a part of. And this is going to be, all the proceeds that we are getting for this five K will be donated to the Japan Club of Guam for our brothers and sisters who, you know, experienced this tragic earthquake and tsunami that hit earlier in March. And so registrations are ongoing, Madam Speaker. And we're inviting the Guam Legislature staff, employees, and really the people of Guam to please come out. Our community has come out in large and small ways. But this, Madam Speaker, is, I think, is an opportunity to come out for our people to give in a very small way. Registration fees are seven dollars. And it does two things. It helps our brothers and sisters in Japan, but also promotes a healthier living. The route is going to be from Ipau Beach to Fujita and back. And so I'm asking people to please come out and support. On race day, it's ten dollars on race day. And people can register at my office or we'll have some delivered to your office as well, Madam Speaker, and in Hornet Sporting Goods. Thank you.
Thank you very much for that announcement. On the motion then, Senator, for adjournment?
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I move that we adjourn, subject to the call of the speaker.
On that motion then, without any objections, order.